So it's one o'clock now. We'll just give the commissioners a few minutes to show up and then we can get started. Holly, your camera's a little low. We're kind of looking at your stomach.
Oh my gosh.
There we go. Perfect.
Is that too hot?
I think that's good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll get started. Good afternoon. This is the time and place for the Planning Commission briefing for the city of Pittsburgh on July 26. This is Rachel O'Neil acting as chair today because our Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary are unavailable at the moment. So this is the briefing portion of the agenda, meaning that we will be hearing from applicants and then have comment from the commissioners. There is no public comment at this time. Action items will be heard after briefing, at which time there is public comment. On briefing today, we have three items, starting with DCP ZDR 2022 05156 429 through 433 Wood Street, followed by item B, DCP ZDR 2021 14139 350 Forbes Avenue, and then item C, which is DCP MPZC 2021-01727 for Carnegie Mellon University. And before we jump into the first item, we'll do a quick roll call slash access check, which should be short. Let's see if we'll just go through this. Chair Mandor, Vice Chair LaShawn Burton Falk, Secretary Mingo, Commissioner Askey, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Blackwell, Commissioner Dietrich.
Here.
Commissioner Dick.
Here.
And Commissioner O'Neill, present. So we will start with DCP ZDR 2022 05156 429 through 433 Wood Street. That's demolition, new construction, and exterior alterations in the Central Business District neighborhood. And I will turn it over to Mr. Kuhnack.
Commissioner O'Neill, beforehand, are we expecting a quorum for hearing inaction or not?
I am going to ask staff that. I understood we were. Fingers crossed.
Hi, Commissioners. At this time, we expect a quorum at hearing inaction. If that changes, we'll let you know.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Anne.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Before I start the briefing report, will our applicants who wish to speak, please raise your hands so that we can promote you as a panelist.
Hello, Commissioners. Good afternoon.
Great. We can hear you. Thank you very much. And DJ, if there's additional presenters who wish to speak, you can just have them raise their hands also, and we'll promote them. I'll start the report now and then introduce the team. Again, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is for Project Development Plan Application DCP ZDR 2022 05156 for demolition, new construction, and exterior alterations. This project includes demolition of the existing three-story structure located at 433 Wood Street, parcel 1-H-237, and new construction of a five-story structure. Exterior alterations are proposed for two abutting existing structures, 421 Forbes Avenue, known as the Skinny Building, and 429 to 431 Wood Street, known as the Roberts Building. A public-facing interior art installation program is proposed for the Skinny Building and is before the commission as exterior alterations. The applicant is proposing to consolidate parcels and exterior renovations to interconnect all three structures. No uses are proposed as part of this PDP application. There are no requests to the zoning board of adjustment. Staff design review was held on May 16, 2022, and June 26, 2022. CDAP review is not recommended. The design review members attached. The second staff design review reviewed the proposed art installation program and included staff from PACD. Development Activities Meeting was held virtually on April 14, 2022, with Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. And with that, I will turn it over to our applicants.
Excellent. Thank you, Kevin. So this is just our kind of general intro slide. Most of this went away.
Oh, sorry. I had a technical problem. Let me try it again.
Okay, no worries. Excellent. We can see it again. Shall we proceed? Okay.
Please.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us. This is just kind of a general splash image slide that kind of outlines the nature of this proposed project. It is the adaptive reuse and rehabilitation of the Skinny and Roberts buildings and the new construction, as well as demolition of an existing structure located at 433 Wood Street. You can advance to the next slide, probably two, to the site plan.
My apologies again. Let me, I'm gonna stop sharing. I'm gonna retry again.
Okay. We can share as well, whichever you prefer.
I also have a backup copy downloaded. I can share if this next this next attempt has technical difficulties as well.
I tried it this morning. I tried it this morning and it worked. And so I am a little embarrassed. So isn't the whole thing open and all up? Okay, and we're going on to this is the page you want, right?
Correct. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Okay. This is a general kind of site and location plan. North is actually located towards the upper right corner. So we oriented this kind of orthogonal to the streets here. We're looking at the three parcels located at Forbes Avenue and Wood Street. As mentioned previously, those are the Skinny Building, the Roberts Building, and 433 currently Mama Lucia's. These are directly across from the tower at PNC Plaza. Next slide, please. This is those three parcels, the subject parcels, in their kind of context. This is just to give you an idea of kind of the urban fabric in this area. It's kind of zero build-to-lines, structures ranging anywhere from three to about five stories tall. And these two are at the left side of the page, or these three are at the left side of the page. Next slide, please. The next slides you'll see will be a combination of kind of existing imagery of the subject parcels, as well as some kind of precedent imagery. This slide is looking at the Skinny Building, as well as the front canopy of the Roberts Building, and kind of showing some views out from those structures themselves. Historically, Skinny was a kind of restaurant function on the ground floor with kind of spillover dining above. It did at one point in time have some awnings on the exterior. Those awnings have been removed, and the fabric ones have been added in, as well as Roberts has an awning structure existing on it. And we are proposing some additional awning structures on the new building. Next slide, please. These are just some images of the interior. As you can see, the general idea here is to kind of give them a refresh and bring them back to kind of locality. Next slide. And these are some kind of precedent images of inspiration to kind of help guide the project along. The image on the left is just kind of a general kind of brick infill structure in an urban context. And the other images are just some interior imagery to kind of help guide kind of material palettes and material selections. This project is, however, just a shell and core at this time, with future tenants and fit-out coming in a later phase. Next slide. These are some images of awnings and kind of operable glass walls. We will talk more about this in a minute as it relates to the Skinny Building, as well as 433. Next slide, please. And these are just some precedent images of kind of some kind of contextual kind of urban facades that kind of relate to a historical context. They use kind of brick masonry and glass. Next slide. This will be our facade study section. So this, the first couple of slides, we'll look at the Skinny Building. As previously mentioned, this is a shell and core fit-out. The proposed function for the ground level is either retail or food and beverage. To facilitate and assist in this, we're looking at kind of flip-up doors that would kind of be image left and right, where you see the kind of canopy protruding in the center there. Those would be kind of fixed windows with doors going inside. The upper levels will be unoccupied, and there will be an art program as part of the function. It will only be access for general maintenance and installation, and so the artwork will be viewed from the street level. And then the images off to the right-hand side are some of the products we're considering for the facade. They range from kind of replacement windows to kind of PVC trims, simulated metal tile roofs, and the flip-up doors that were previously mentioned. Next slide, please. This gives you an idea of kind of the overall color palette being explored for the project, as well as an image that shows those operable flip-up doors open. Next slide, please. This is just the kind of supporting image. You can go to the next one as well. That was just the doors closed, and now they're open. As part of this, we are, our civil is going through DOMA to get the proper encroachment permits for both the flip-up doors and the new canopies, as well as the existing canopies. Next slide, please. Again, flipped up. Next. The following slides are kind of a summary of the proposed art program. We won't get too much into the details here. We wanted to give you enough information so that you can go back and explore this later. There's also additional information in the appendix of this presentation. But generally speaking, the client is looking at either doing a digital art installation or a physical art installation. To be determined, the digital, we go to the next slide. And these are some signage considerations, as well as to acknowledge that we are aware of the dark skies ordinance in the city of Pittsburgh. Next slide. The digital installation would make use of digital screens kind of located just behind the glass on the interior. These screens are the LED screens. They would be a program for kind of either splitting the building, either second floor versus third floor with two different artists, or kind of left and right, depending on the kind of needs of the time. Next slide, please. So just a little more information about the screens that are being explored. Next slide. And this is a slide that just talks about the physical art installation, if that is a direction that is gone with. Next slide, please. These effectively would be like window displays kind of captured in shadow boxes. Next slide. Turning our attention to the Roberts Building, the intent here is to kind of somewhat restore the ground-level facade to something that is compatible with this area of town. It is not a full kind of facsimile of what was there historically, but wanted to kind of work in some glass elements to kind of improve visibility to the street, maintain the canopy, and overall kind of sprucing up the facade here, the existing terracotta. Next slide. These are some of the materials being explored for this facade. So again, a recessed vestibule, so the doors do not open onto the street or to the sidewalk, as it were. Some nice big, large pieces of glass, kind of maintaining that visibility and connection to the street, and looking at probably a rough cut indoor leather granite base material underneath the glass. Next slide, please. This slide is looking at the proposed 433 infill structure. There are, we're looking at a kind of subdued material palette. You see kind of some black brick options, some gray metal panel, and some glass options for this kind of animated, pixelated facade. Next slide. These are just some supporting views, some additional views to kind of give you a better idea of the context and how these three buildings work together. Next slide, please. And this is a nighttime rendering that kind of, that shows kind of a proposed exterior lighting approach, as well as some ideas about perhaps what the art installations could look like. Next slide. I'm gonna turn this over to Ryan now to kind of give us a brief overview of the history of these two buildings, Skinny and Roberts.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ryan England. I'm working with Milton McAdott Architects, and we are the historical consultants on this project. The Skinny Building was built in 1926. The Roberts Building was built in the 1860s. We don't have a precisity. There are some buildings with some really great history and also just architecturally, a lot of presence in the mind and spirit of the people of the city. And so we took a lot of care to take a close look at the history of the buildings and design appropriate and just really excellent restoration for both buildings. So we're gonna start with the Skinny Building. These are some photos from 1933-ish, when the building was operating as a fruit stand primarily. And you can see people, you know, buying fruit and produce off of the sidewalks. But it wasn't just one vendor. There were three vendors on the ground floor of the building. You see a substantial awning in the center of the building. You see some cloth-type canopies. You see the rhythmic, kind of about three foot wide or slightly narrower windows and bays on the, on the building. And then you see like a watch vendor on the corner. So a lot of things going on. Go to the next slide. And then these are photos from the 1950s. The longest tenant of the Skinny Building was Ray Wells Diner. They were there from 1938 to 1971. They had a very, very narrow counter. These doors had opened up, set on stools. Must have been one of the tightest diners in the city, but you know, I think it's a, it's a very engaging space. So you see photos of customers sitting at these very small bar stools on the bottom row. You also see that is a aluminum awning, just like you see all over the city. That awning is now gone, and you know, you see signage. It's got a Coca-Cola logo and you, you're looking at these photos, I mean, you just see that the building went through a bunch of different lives, especially on the ground floor. But in every instance, the building was sidewalk-facing, very engaging to the street life, providing, whether it be food or basic retail. And even today, you know, the tenant of the building is, sells t-shirts and other memorabilia to people passing by on the sidewalk. Next slide. Roberts is, in some ways, simpler. Everything above the ground floor is just gonna be restored. You know, everything there is historically intact. The terracotta is in pretty good shape. Definitely needs some maintenance and repair. The windows need replacement. But we're able to do really excellent historic restoration there without needing to imagine or re-envision too much. But the ground floor, if, if you're familiar, it was a 7-Eleven was the most recent use of the building. So it's got a, and not so great quality kind of granite tile facade with an aluminum door. So there's nothing historic about the ground floor. The awning has been restored. It's, it's not quite restored like the historic awning. It's not quite as ornate, not quite as art deco, but it's still a great-looking awning in good condition. To try and envision what would be an appropriate way to treat that facade, we did look at a couple other historic examples. The, the two examples on the bottom right are from Rittenhouse Square in Philadelphia, and they're just two examples of modern storefronts in historic buildings that work and feel really engaging and appropriate, transparent, all the things that we were looking for in our new design. So as you reflect upon what DJ presented and the remainder of the presentation, these are kind of some of the historical considerations. If there are more questions from the commission, we did do quite a lot of historical research, so we'd be glad to answer any questions at whatever depth that you're looking for, but I thought this was an appropriate amount of information to present at this time. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ryan. If we go to the next slide, please. This will be a kind of a floor plan section. We won't dwell on these too much. But generally speaking, the layout of these pages, the floor plan you'll see on the left is the existing floor plan that defines what is to remain and what is to be demolished. And the floor plan on the right is the proposed shell and core floor plan for the project. Generally speaking, the approach we used here was all of the kind of critical infrastructure functions were to be located inside the proposed building at 433. This was so that we wouldn't have any kind of adverse impact on Roberts or Skinny. Historically, those two buildings were never connected. And as such, their floor plates don't line up as, as you stack up the sections of the building. So as we, as you go up through, looking at our stair plans, you'll see where we've snuck in some kind of egress corridors to provide egress from the Skinny Building to the proposed stair located at the rear of Roberts. We go to the next slide, please. So again, 433 is gonna house the passenger elevator, a fire stair, the restrooms, as well as some mechanical spaces. The Roberts Building will house a proposed freight elevator and a new fire stair that is code compliant. Next slide. We actually, the next slide, too. This is one of those connections we were talking about. If you look at the top of the proposed plan, you'll see the egress corridor from the Skinny Building into the Roberts Building. Next slide, please. This is just looking similar, kind of stacking going on here. Next slide. And this is kind of the top level, the last kind of interior level to the project, the fifth level. And then finally, next slide should be the roof. We are looking at a potential kind of roof deck on the top of 433. With one stair coming up, we're keeping the area of this level below 50 occupants. Next slide. And these are just some sections. So again, you can see how these, these two, the two existing buildings kind of stack up, as well as the new building located at 433. Again, the levels of 433 will align with the existing levels of Roberts. Skinny is kind of maintaining its, its existing levels. And where we can get that connection for the egress corridor over, we are proposing and providing that. Next slide. Here's some more sections. We're looking through Roberts this time. You can see there's a lot of kind of really nice high spaces in Roberts. And the intent here would be to kind of maintain those as best we can and kind of keep that character. Next slide. And then this is the appendix. We don't have to go through this. We just kind of included the supplemental kind of art installation slides here, should you have any questions. I believe you can probably skip to the end now, would be our thank you slide. And that's it. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. We are in the briefing portion, so there is no public comment at this time. We do open up comment for commissioners. Commissioner Dick?
I have several questions. First of all, I appreciate your presentation, particularly the historical part of it. I thoroughly enjoyed that. Tell me, if you give us any kind of a possible clue, eventual use of these newly connected and built buildings?
For the proposed use for the spaces. So currently, kind of from a building code perspective and kind of looking at these floor plans and sizing our stairs and restrooms, we're looking at this as a kind of a flexible office and/or assembly space, and that's what our current assumption is for that.
Could you go over your efforts to make this an accessible complex? I know it's difficult with these older buildings and so on. I think you, you do have accessible entrances from, from the front, don't you?
That is correct. Yes, we do.
But what about the interior accessibility of them?
Yes, so we are providing passenger and freight elevators to all levels of the project. Again, the only kind of inaccessible areas would be the Skinny Building galleries, which are uninhabited by the general public, only for maintenance personnel.
Thank you. Any other comments? Question? No. Thank you. I only have one question quickly at the beginning of the presentation, when there were, there were some material details the word use were considering and exploring. Are, are these materials selected? Is this still in an early, is this still subject to change? What's the status?
The materials have been selected in terms of their overall kind of color palette and values. So yes, would, would you like more information on them?
I, I think I just want to know, I mean, have you determined the type? What, what exactly is going to be on the facade?
Yes.
So if, if you're not able to tell us now, if you could tell us this week.
Okay.
In two weeks.
Okay. Actually, in September because of your recess?
Oh, boy. Yes, thank you. We all do recess. So yes, if you could come back in September, that would be appreciated.
Me too.
Okay, well, we will see you in September. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. And then moving on to item B of the briefing portion is DCP ZDR 2021 14139 350 Forbes Avenue. This is an amendment to the PDP 15-004 for Point Park Playhouse Urban Open Space, and this is located in the Central Business District neighborhood. And Ms. Rakis is presenting.
Thank you. If I can do a quick sound check with Sean Gallagher here, make sure we can hear you, and then I will do my intro. Sean, you should be able to unmute yourself.
There we go. Sorry about that. Is that better?
Not a problem. Yes, great. Okay. So thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. This is a little bit of an unusual application in that it is an amendment to the Product Development Plan 50 So thank you, Commissioner O'Neil, this is a little bit of an unusual application in that it is an amendment to the Product Development Plan fifteen zero zero four. So this was approved back in twenty fifteen with the required urban open space provided at ground level and on the second floor. One of the planning commission conditions of approval at that time was that signage be installed indicating that it was urban open space open to the public. The property owner was cited in September of twenty twenty-one as they had installed signage stating that the urban open space was closed to the public. The signage has now been removed and the applicant is seeking to add fencing gates so that the gates would be closed overnight. And to install the required signage indicating that it is open to the public. As the proposed fencing and gates are a significant change to the urban open space, the zoning administrator determined that this is not approvable as a minor amendment to the product development plan. And it must return to planning commission, which is why it's back to before briefing today. The proposed fencing and gates were reviewed at staff designer view in January of twenty twenty-two. Staff had concerns about the height of the proposed fence and the gates, and they felt that they created an inhospitable space for pedestrians. And would thus discourage the use of the urban open space. Staff recommended that the applicant look at a lower fence height and gate options and other designs that better align with the existing building. You will see two height options as part of the presentation today. But overall, this applicant has chosen to proceed to planning commission with a very similar design that we saw in staff designer review, just with the two height options. And one last piece, the development activities meeting was not required as this is an amendment to the project development plan that was had a complete application and was approved prior to the. Registered community organizations ordinance. So with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant to make their presentation.
Thank you, Kate. Good afternoon. So just as as Kate mentioned, this is an amendment to the existing PDP. This is for the Pittsburgh Playhouse and the big issue is with the open open space that we have. Presently is that after hours, it's become a haven for criminal activity. And if you walk by, it's like the downtown urinal, it's been very problematic to keep it. Clean and to get rid of the smell you walk by, it's a kind of overwhelming, so. That is the reason that we are here and Kate, if you could just probably just skip ahead to her and cite it, slide eight. So. I think this is six, but this is this. Yeah, this is fine.
Okay.
You can you can go off it. This is the existing playhouse. Long Forbes Avenue, I mean, this is all built, everything's existing except the gates along Forbes Avenue. They were designed, as you can see, to match the fencing on the upper terrace, which is open to the public. There's a gate to the right and a gate to the left, which will show. Our primary option here is we, it's a six and a half foot high fence. We believe that aesthetically it looks better than lower fence and it also, it's a better security option. Next slide, please. Just another view, this is where the gates closed. Next slide. So we will have three signs you can see on the bottom. That's in that's the very last slide that we have notifying the public passing by that. The park and the upper terrace are open from nine AM to or eight AM to nine PM. And that'll be closed afterwards. Next slide, please. So one of the comments that we received back from city planning before, I believe we only had the gates closed. These are a couple different renderings with the gate open and a little bit background to show that it's it is going to be open to the public. Next slide. It's a different view and I think the next one is head on, you can see that. To the right, there will be a gate that swings back and to the left, you could see the other gate or swings back a hundred and eighty degrees. That will be open during regular hours. Okay, next slide, please. So in response to the comment that we got back from staff, they asked us to look at a. Lower fence, this is the same type of fence, it is just lowered to five and a half feet. You know, as I said, aesthetically, we don't believe it looks as good, but you know, we do want to be responsive to the comments that we receive. Next slide. Just another view. Again, next slide. Go to the next slide, actually go to the last slide, so. That's the comparison, you know, it's our preference to go with the taller sign. One, because it looks better, two, because you know, that somebody wants to get over that fence after hours, it's. Then if you go to the very last slide, please.
It's the first slide, how am I supposed to know?
There we go, the these are the signs, there will be three signs. That. Which you saw in the previous plan that will notify the public that it is open from eight AM to nine PM. Both the ground floor and the upper terrace. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell, if anybody has any questions. Comments.
Thank you. We don't take any public comment at this time during briefing, we do open the floor to commissioner comments.
Sean, do you want to review again the height heights for a second?
Yeah, sorry, the very, the first, the primary. Height for our number one option is six and a half feet. And the second one is five and a half feet.
And Kate, could you review for us what the design? You know, response was, you said, is it is the six and a half, is the five and a half feet preferred from? See that side?
So yeah, we just reviewed it in staff designer view, I mean, I don't know that there's necessarily, we would say one solution would be the, you know, the best solution. And our concern was that it looked just sort of inhospitable and, you know, we want to make sure that. You know, again, we understand the security concerns, but we want to make sure that when people walking by, in addition to reading the signs from an urban design perspective. It looks like a place that's inviting to the public during those normal business hours.
And you didn't see a difference between the two or a preference of that?
Yeah, and we didn't, they, the applicant had had indicated that they wanted to return to planning commission with the design that we saw in staff designer view. And then they provided the additional renderings when they submitted the planning commission presentation for briefing, so. We hadn't taken the lower fence height through the through staff design.
Okay. I mean, I guess it would be a preference for the lower, but I'm not, you know, what? It I'm, is it basically that it's open access has created the problems, it sounds like, and something that's more attractive. And you know, inviting even when closed would be preferable.
Understood, that's why we tried to show different renderings that when those both those gates are open, I mean, it will. I believe it'll look inviting and open.
Yeah, I'm I'm looking at the. Just the the street facing view and it does. It it seems like it would be a little questionable how inviting it would be when it is open during the day. I don't know. If when you come back, if you could provide a little bit more detail about what the fence looks like, we see that kind of further away, but if we could see. More detail about how that looks, the materials, how that would look. And then as far as the the gates that open, are they both swinging inward into the property?
Yes.
Yes. And they would kind of be like tied back or connected back so they wouldn't be.
On the sidewalk.
During the day, okay. Okay. Yeah, it's a it's a tough spot, I understand the security issue and we want it to be. A space that's maintained and open to the public during the day. But to the extent. That it could be more inviting. Were there any other options explored for this, any other designs?
Ah, other than a fence? No.
Fences?
Well, I think that we went with this just because that's already what's existing. If you look at the upper, it matches what we already have.
Any other comments from commission? Hearing none, we will see you back here in September.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
And so we are on to item C of briefing, this is DCP dash MPZZC dash twenty twenty-one dash zero one seven two seven. Carnegie Mellon University, this is the institutional master plan and zone change request, this is briefing number two of two. And the property is located in Squirrel Hill North, North Oakland and the Shady Side neighborhood. Sir Koonak.
Thank you, commissioners. Would those who would like to speak as part of this application, please raise your hands. And we will promote you as a panelist. Okay, so right now. Bob, we have you and Ms. Beck, is that?
Yeah, that's it for now, we have others here, if we need to bring them on for additional questions or additional resources, but. It's just right now Jen and I are planning to do the presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, good afternoon commissioners, this is an application for a zone, a zone change petition and new institutional master plan. Submitted by Carnegie Mellon University. As stated in in the introduction, this is briefing number two of two with hearing and action returning back at September. The zone change petition is to change the zoning of three locations to educational medical institution. That first location is Neville at Fifth Avenue, parcel fifty-two dash J dash sixty and fifty-two dash J. Dash fifty, currently residential multi-unit high density. The second location is along Devonshire Road, parcel fifty-two dash K dash one seventy-five, fifty-two dash K dash one eighty-two. Fifty-two dash K dash one eighty-eight, fifty-two dash K dash one ninety-one. Currently resident residential single units attached, low density. And the third location is Forbes at Margaret Morrison, parcel fifty-three dash C dash ninety-three, currently residential two unit. Low density. There's no development in the ten year master, in in the ten year development envelope proposed for these three locations. That are requested in the in the zone change petition. All of these sites in a ten year development envelope are already within the EMI district. The institutional master plan includes twenty development sites in the ten year envelope. The development site indicated as site seventeen is within the RMVH zoning district and advisory only, it's not regulated by the IMP, but it's within a thousand feet of EMI. The applicant team participated in the city's performance targets program. This program reviews performance targets generated based on city and twenty thirty district goals, targets include energy use. Energy generation, water use, standards and certifications, stormwater, open space, entry canopy, public art, neighborhood enhancement, mobility. Waste and resilience. This process was designed to go hand in hand with the IMP best practices guide adopted by the planning commission in twenty eighteen. The transportation impact study is under review by the Department of Mobility Infrastructure. This application is within the registered community organization areas for Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, Oakland Planning and Development Corporation and Oakland Business and Improvement District. And with that, I will turn it over to our applicants.
Thanks, Kevin, it's great to be here, thanks for having us back for our second briefing. We're going to kind of pick up where we left off two weeks ago, if you remember where we we talked about two weeks ago. Well, I'll get to that in just a moment of what we what we've covered, I do want to make sure I introduce our team. As Kevin noticed noted, Jen Beck, our project manager on the master plan is here and her and I will be tag team, tag teaming on the presentation. We also have a deep team of folks from our own team, including Don Carter, Ralph Organ, our associate vice president, Megan Pierce, our project associate on the project. And our consultants are also here if we have additional questions, including urban design associates, GI consultants, Andy Valvia, who worked with us on sustainability. So if we could go to the first next slide, please. As I said, last, excuse me. Sorry, last time we covered the first five chapters of our master plan that included our mission and needs. Of the institution and covered our long range twenty-five year outlook. And it also uncovered the the twenty development sites that we've identified in our institutional master plan and the urban design guidelines for that. What we're going to cover this afternoon is the last three chapters of the document that includes mobility, infrastructure, neighborhood engagement. And then we're going to circle back at the end and talk about some of the comments that came from the planning commission at the last briefing two weeks ago. We've made some some updates, we have a series of community comments that we wanted to kind of show you what the comments have been for the last year or so as we've been doing our outreach. We also wanted to give an update on some very positive and useful suggestions coming from the commission to kind of rethink the way we showed our tenure development sites. And so we're going to show some examples of that. And then also do a final last piece on the schedule, so let's plunge in, we'll start with mobility, if we can go to the next page, please. Oh, that's that's right, we did put this in just as a kind of refresh and to remind the commission of all the various neat, the principles, the planning principles, which we established. Almost two years ago is now as part of our master plan, which become the, they're the underlying tenants of everything that we look at in regards to our IMP. And it moves especially from everything from design about creating timeless buildings and enduring public spaces. The experience with gateways and collaboration, the idea of mobility, and we're going to talk a lot about mobility here in a few moments. Context, we're going to talk a lot about Craig Street and Stanley Park. And really at the end of it, also understanding that this document is intended to be a flexible document, knowing that we can't read the future exactly, we want to be able to have a master plan that can respond to a dynamic future. So we can go to the next slide. And we're going to jump right in immediately into our mobility section. Again, for reference, on each of the slides, you'll see the the box in the upper right, which refers to the zoning code requirements for this, to make sure that we're addressing all those requirements. Obviously, we go far beyond what the initial, the immediate requirements are with a lot of additional information. This page is talking about our mobility goals, our mobility goals really are, can be summed up in the diagram on the lower right, which is our upside down wedding cake. And showing that we are taking focusing on the pedestrian above all, bikes, scooters, other personal mobility devices, kind of next tier down. Transit that includes shuttles at the next tier down below that, and as you move down to the bottom, a lesser focus on vehicles, including especially single occupancy vehicles at the bottom. The goals on the left then reflect what our mobility intentions are for this twenty, this twenty twenty-two institutional master plan. Basically, working to create new and improved pedestrian walkways that strengthen connections. Increasing pedestrian safety and comforting and comfort by putting in additional signage, signaling, lighting, crosswalks. Bolstering the existing bike amenities on campus, but also working to connect not just around campus, but across campus and through to our neighboring communities. Working to with our institutional partners to look at ways that we can do develop shared shuttling services, such as micro transit, micro transit. Working to institute transportation demand management or TDM to reduce our single occupancy vehicle mode share on campus, and we're going to talk about that in a few moments. And then overall, our biggest, the big statement out of that is using all these improvements to work towards the goal of no net new parking on campus, basically holding line with the parking we have. We obviously are going to be building new parking, but the intent of that is any, the parking that we build will be replacement for eventually or for elimination of surface parking across campus. With the ultimate goal of elimination of of as much of the surface parking on campus as we can. Go to the next slide, please. This first slide, this was kind of early diagram that we did early on that showed how these campus connections are important. And this was just a kind of early thinking of. And this was just a kind of early thinking about how we wanted to look at this and how we make these campus connections. And it includes the, I think you can see the ideas of on the left is Forbes Avenue, on the right is Shunley Park. Uh, the cut is running from north to south, from left to right. It includes a new bike track connection. Uh, and one of the things we're looking at is the idea of separating bikes, uh, and scooters and such from the pedestrians on a couple of key routes across campus. It also includes, uh, uh, integrating with bus rapid transit that will be coming up from, uh, downtown in Oakland. Uh, working to create additional seating. One of the things we've learned from the pandemic is that people will sit outside even in Pittsburgh. And if we provide seating and even more intentional seating, that we could actually build a better public realm around our campus. Uh, that also includes the areas around the beach, which is the area above the tennis court, show number five, and the idea of reimagining the CFA parking lot. Um, as a new kind of, uh, more hardscape plaza, pedestrian plaza here at the core of campus. And then the final idea of these kind of mid campus connections is this idea of creating a new entrance, uh, to Shunley Plaza, Shunley Park, especially around the Flagstaff Hill area. We're going to talk a lot about those as we go through this. So next slide, please. This diagram really lays out the idea of what this is the kind of a, a snapshot of all the mobility network, um, ideas that we're looking at here. Uh, on this, the green are the pedestrian networks or the shared paths that we have around campus to connect around. And you can see there's kind of connecting to the park, connecting across campus. The orange lines, excuse me, are the proposed, uh, bike tracks across campus, the north south one that would take you from Shady Side to Shunley Park. Uh, the, like a trail connection that takes you from the railroad crossing on Neville to connect up with the Eliza Furnace Trail further down at the bottom of John Care. Integrating, uh, new bike, bike lanes that will connect from campus down to that trail down on, on South Neville. It also works to the idea of, we're exploring the idea of creating a neighborway, uh, much like a lot of the other neighborhoods have been implemented throughout the city and the south side and Lawrenceville and Bloomfield and such. Looking at that on through Margaret Morrison and Tech Streets, this idea of a slower scale, uh, road, public road, but it's a more pedestrian and bike oriented and more bike friendly and pedestrian bike friendly. Less impotent, less focused on cars, moving cars through the space. And then, of course, as I talked about, uh, working with the Port Authority as they work to expand, uh, bus rapid transit. Next slide, please. Uh, these are a series, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but this is really an example of all the kind of individual ideas. For installations or improvements that we're looking to make for mobility across campus. They, uh, and you can kind of think of this as our kind of our target action plan. And it ranges from everything from continuing to upgrade pedestrian intersections, especially at Fifth and Neville, Fifth and, uh, Morewood, the railroad crossing, uh, down in Neville Street. For South Neville and as well at, uh, Shunley Drive and Tech Street as down over by the, kind of by the Westinghouse phone. Also includes making, we're looking at targeting bridge improvements to the Forbes Avenue Bridge over the railroad. Uh, obviously, understanding that that is a city owned bridge with a railroad underneath it and a common wall right of way across it. But we'd like to explore ideas of how we can make that pedestrian experience across that bridge better. Other ideas, we, we already talked a little bit about the neighborway. We are starting to let, uh, building on the Oakland plan that was recently approved by the planning commission. We are looking at these idea, these kind of micro mobility, uh, stations throughout campus, areas where we could be targeting, working with healthy ride. I guess it's, no, it's the Pogo stations. Uh, that would be across campus and integrating scooter parking through that. We've been working with the spin folks on how we can target where parking, where we want those things to park. And then disincentivizing for where they don't, where we don't want them to park and kind of creating pockets for that. We've been working very hard with the Craig Street Business District, uh, resident, uh, owners and business owners. As well as the Open Business Improvement District to really focus, look at making urban design improvements, uh, along Craig Street to help bolster the, the business district there. Uh, we also are looking at where we are implementing parking, new structured parking in the future that would ultimately replace the surface parking. Introducing both tandem parking, which is the T, as well as charging centers for electric vehicles and all of those as well, shown by the lightning bolt. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the next couple of slides are showing the kind of density of what we're looking at in regards to creating these various networks. And we're going to focus on the kind of. In the same cadence of the upside down wedding cake, looking at them from the pedestrian down to the single occupancy vehicle. This is the proposed pedestrian network. We talked a lot about this. We can see the dash lines are where we're creating new connections. And kind of really, really building on the dense network of the campus, uh, campus grid as well as the Craig Street grid. Next slide, please. This slide again is showing then the next layer, which is the proposed bike network. That includes existing, the solid lines are showing where there is existing bike lanes or bike ways that are moving across, uh, through the east side. And the dash lines are showing where we're proposing to add additional bike infrastructure to help connect those pieces. It also will help connect Shady Side to campus, Shady Side to, uh, to, to Shunley Park and connecting all of the east end with a better connection to the Eliza Furnace Trail. Uh, next slide, please. This slide actually looks at a couple of different items that, uh, the, the transit network with the port or the Pittsburgh Regional Transit with PRT. Um, obviously with the, the potential changes that are coming, um, the slimming down, if you will, of the, the BRT wherever there's, that's a little bit in flex, but. Going by where their proposed stations have been, uh, for the BRT at Craig Street, at Morewood and at Margaret Morrison. The yellow areas show the kind of, uh, five minute walk cycle or radius from that really kind of centering and, and improving, uh, transit connections to campus. The pink lines are showing where, uh, the, the existing university shuttles run and also one that, that would be then we'd want to utilize those as partnering with and partnering with our institutional. Uh, neighbors on looking at shared, uh, shared shuttle facilities. Then finally, the green line on there is the area that was identified by next transit by PRT as a, as quarter G as a future, uh, long range future, um, um. The fixed, fixed guideway system for transit that would link from the South Hills, uh, through Hazelwood Green up through Oakland and ultimately to the Hill District and the Strip District. Next slide, please. This is the proposed, as we're moving into vehicles now, this is the proposed parking system. You can see we're proposing the elimination of ultimate elimination of the surface parking lots and. Proposing to put parking underneath buildings as we build them. That's been the mode for the last fifteen years at the university, beginning with the Gates and Hillman Building. The CIC building, uh, the New Tepper building, even the new TCS, uh, Hall, all which had layers of parking underneath them and to support, uh, the, the needs for the campus and holding that line. Uh, it's also important to note that the light tan areas on this are all the areas where we have residential permit parking districts, which basically, which essentially cover all of the residential areas around us. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide is showing our current parking inventory. You can see we have just shy of three thousand spaces. And the goal is to, uh, maintain those as we move forward with developments going forward. Next slide, please. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jen to talk about some of our infrastructure components.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, so we're going to start with, with infrastructure and for that, um, sustainability, um, goes hand in hand. Carnegie Mellon Strategic Plan includes sustainability as one of its, uh, seven values. And we're committed to modeling that value, um, in our operations, in our education, um, and in our research practices. Uh, under the umbrella, if you will, of the, the seventeen, um, United Nations Sustainable Goals. Um, so our sustainability effort, uh, is building on two decades of, uh. Of engagement in the, in the implementation of environmentally conscious, um, practices and activities on our campus. So the six goals that are, that are on the screen kind of, uh, sort of over, the overarching goals for the entire, um, our entire sustainability, uh, plan. We know that, um, reducing energy usage is sort of, sort of the number one thing. And that's something that we, we have been doing, it have been tracking, uh, since two thousand and three and year after year. Um, even though we have increased in population and increased in square footage, um, we've managed to, um. Reduce the amount of energy that we use. At the same time, we've, uh, made commitments to purchasing, uh, cleaner, uh, fuel. While also, and we're looking at our legacy buildings and goal number three, um, looking at creating, uh, you know, redundant systems. Um, sort of all across our campus so that we can prepare with, um, whatever challenges may, may come, uh, from climate change. Greenhouse gas reductions is something we've also reduced, uh, year, year over year and, and we track, um. Have tracked for almost twenty years. Uh, when we look at how we're performing, uh, in sustainability, we sort of like to look at our, our peers, our tier one research universities. Um, in similar climate bands and understand how, how our results are holding up against those peers. Goal number six, you know, living in Western Pennsylvania, we know that, that stormwater, um, is an issue and, and with climate change, it's, it's an issue that's, you know. Isn't, isn't going away and getting, you know, something we need to continue pay a lot of attention to. And so we have developed, uh, a variety of systems, uh, for, for managing and dealing with that stormwater. Next slide. Okay, so just following along, um, with the, with the document, we're going to talk about, um, tree preservation. Um, and replacement. So we're committed to a healthy and growing tree canopy across all properties, um, from, you know, Mellon Institute, uh, clear over to the Margaret Morrison Street corridor. Um, and we have a couple of, of goals when it comes to tree replacement. So we want to fill in the gaps where trees may have been removed, whether it's, uh, due to decline in health. Or, or some kind of other damage. Um, we want to try and replace those trees where, where they were at. Um, what a really important, um. Location of tree replenishment will be, um, along the sort of the south, southwestern sort of flank where, where, um, we want to restore. And what was the original sort of more forested, um, area of, of the hillside. Um, but we're looking at a variety of approaches. So filling in, uh, doing, doing understory trees with, uh, with ground cover underneath. Um, and sort of completing some of the plans that have been developed over the years, particularly for our mall, our mall master plan. Uh, just bring sort of more, more trees to the campus, not just because they're, they're, they're beautiful to look at. It's a nice place to sit under, but also because we know that. Um, it helps us to, um, keep the, the temperature down on the campus. It helps with stormwater. Uh, they're just. No, no, no reason not, not to do it. Um, we've also made a commitment that where we do need to remove trees, uh, for development projects. Um, we're going to replace those trees at the sort of a hundred and ten percent level. And we want to keep in mind, um, caliper, but also the canopy, um, in that replacement strategy. Next slide. So our energy metrics, um, sort of align to our regional sort of climate, um, you'll peer group. Uh, I talked a little bit earlier about being a tier one research university. We do have buildings that are, that are sort of energy hogs or energy, you know, heavy energy users. Um, and this map sort of indicates, you know, the, the sites with the blue circles on them are. Lower users of energy and the purple and, and gold sites are, are higher, uh, users of energy. Some of these buildings are legacy buildings like, you know, Mellon Institute, um, right. Donner Hall, um. But which would be, you know, is one of our development sites, Hammer Schlag Hall, Ween Hall. So again, a lot of engineering, um, practices, um, in these buildings. But we have other legacy buildings, buildings like, you know, Baker Hall, Porter Hall, which are over a hundred years old that we have made investments in to, um. Reduce the amount of energy that those, uh, buildings use. And that's a commitment that we're going to continue to, to maintain, um, as we, as we move forward. It's worth noting that the average age of our buildings, um, across our campus, um, is about fifty four years. So we, um, we. We take a lot of pride in our, in our legacy buildings and we want to take care of them while making sure that we're also not, um, not. Using more energy than, than we should. Um, next slide. Okay, so talk a little about stormwater management. Um, we want to make sure that we are minimizing flow into the combined sewer system by managing water. Not just that falls, you know, off of our roofs or falls onto our property, um, but also water that's coming to our site from other locations. Um, we want to continue to seek new ways to divert stormwater, um, whether it's reusing the stormwater, you know, doing internal or external retention. We have, there, there's a big blue circle in the middle of this map and, and it's underneath our historic mall. There are four enormous, uh, cisterns. That, uh, capture stormwater, um, and, and send it away, um, or. Sure, you know, in a more controlled, uh, manner. Uh, some other things that we, that we have done, um, rain gardens, um, green roofs. Sort of in, and, and also some internal, uh, stormwater retention. Um. This is increased tree canopy was, is another, uh, strategy that we said earlier, uh, that's important for, for stormwater management and for each of our development sites and. Even places where maybe we're not doing development, we're going to be sure to, I take a comprehensive approach to, uh, to managing stormwater from those locations. Next slide. Rebuildings. So we, we, we have a lot of them. We've, um, we've got over a million and a half square feet of LEED certified space. And that's, um, that's twenty five percent of our square footage. I think it might be, might be even a little bit higher now than when we, when we first ran those numbers. And we have a commitment through our board of trustees that, um, projects that are, uh, five million dollars and above are, are, are to, are to be LEED certified, uh, facilities. Um, we want to continue to integrate even for facilities where we're maybe not seeking LEED certification. Uh, integrating energy, water, indoor air quality, site design and sustainable material use. Um, it's a part of, of every project, um, that we, that we strive to do. We're really very proud that, uh, we had the first, uh, LEED certified student dormitory, um, in the country. Um, and we are not going to, um, not going to sort of keep the foot off the gas when it comes to, uh, being a leader, uh, in green buildings. Next slide. So open space, uh, Bob talked a little bit about this earlier when we were thinking about improving the connections, um, you know, to and through our campus. As we know that, you know, while we are very proud of our, our buildings, we know that for most people. The, everyone is going to experience the, the open spaces on our campus. And so having, um. A quality experience for pedestrians, cyclists, for people who are even just walking through our campus may not be, um, you know, part, member of the CMU community. Uh, is important. Um, our tree replacement strategy will also heavily influence and support on the improvement of open space across campus. Uh, we like to provide a diversity of size and types of open spaces that includes. Courtyards, formal and informal areas of, of plantings, uh, with a heavy focus on native plantings. Um, athletic fields and playing surfaces. Uh, above all, as I mentioned, we found that, you know, it's while we were, we love our, our grand spaces and the cut and the mall and the, the temper quad. Sometimes it's in the sort of the intimate moments where it's just, you know, a table and two chairs, you know, in small areas around campus that helps to, um. Sort of bring a very, um, personal, human sort of quality, um, to the campus that makes it such, such a nice place to be. Uh, next slide. Okay, so that was the chapter on infrastructure. Uh, now we're going to move on to chapter eight, which has to do, uh, with neighborhood protection. Uh, as I said in the, in the previous, um, in the previous presentation, I will say again that we feel very fortunate to be on MIMIT's three. Very first stable communities of Squirrel Hill and Oakland, um, and Shady Side. And. We appreciate all the interactions we've had, um, over the last, uh, year, year and a half, um, with our neighbors. Um, at the same time, we've recognized that, uh, for them, living close to college campus is not, it's not always a positive thing. And so first we want to look to, um, manage or, you know, mitigate, um, any, you know, potential negative impacts that our neighbors are experiencing, simply by virtue of living where they live. We want to reach out and make positive connections, you know, with the, with the community and bring some of the great things that are happening at Carnegie Mellon, um, into, into their, their community centers and their schools. Third goal is, uh, Craig Street. You know, every great college has a great college street and for us, it's, it's Craig Street and how can we support, um, the residents and the business owners of that area to sort of make it really shine. We want to have amenities that invite people into our campus community. Uh, what can we? How can we have people who aren't necessarily students or faculty or staff or alumni, um, come in and enjoy, um, some of the things we're doing here on our campus? And then finally, taking a broader look at the region, um, having a positive economic impact is something that, um, we think is, is an important goal to, to continue with. Next slide. So this map indicates the various registered community organizations that we are, are surrounded by, um, as well as some of the, the other. Very active community groups that maybe are not, uh, specifically RCOs. Um, we have had meetings with, with many of these groups. You can see outlined and read. Um, what properties we, was owned by Carnegie Mellon. We are grateful to, um, to city planning for their coordination of our, our, um, development activities, uh, meetings that we did, um, in conjunction with, uh, with all three RCOs, um, back in the fall. Next slide. Okay, so the first, uh, the first goal is managing the impact on our neighbors. And this is where we, we're going to talk about, uh, the three small areas, uh, we are proposing, uh. A zoning change. So those areas are highlighted in blue on this map. Uh, they're. If the, I'm going to sort of go from the top of the screen.
It's two oh nine P M.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was there a question? Okay, okay, good. Um, so at the top of the screen, uh, is where in the, near the RMH designation is the, uh, fifth Neville Apartments and then Neville Apartments. Um, which we, uh, renovated two, two summers ago. Um, just to the, to the right of there. Just to the to the right of there, there are several single family homes. Near in these or more regardance area of campus. And then further down on the right, the Woodland Apartments. And we sort of want women to zone what we own. We want to make sure that these properties sort of fall under the same guidelines, the same rules and requirements that are set forth in our institutional master plan. And we want to be very clear that there is no development work planned for these three sites as a part of this master plan. We think it's, you know, we want to. We want to have these these properties sort of fall under under the same umbrella. Some other ways we want to manage the impacts on our neighbors is we want to we want to bring, we want to build more housing on our campus so that students aren't. Living in the neighborhoods, particularly undergraduate students. We have opened the Fifth Clyde Dormitory last year. We're opening the Forbes Bealer Dormitory next year. So we're really looking to. Increase the number of beds and also improve the quality of the the facilities that we can offer our students. We want to, we know this, all of our students is not are not going to live on our campus. So we also want to improve our processes for educating students regarding. Standards of a state of behavior if they are living off campus. We're committed to engagement strategy with all of our neighborhood groups via updates, campus news. We have regular attendance at many of the community meetings, which happen monthly. And that's about the neighbors. Let's let's go to the next slide, please. So when making connections with the community, we think it's kind of a three-pronged approach, going out to the community to give service. We have. We have over forty student groups where their sole purpose is to provide community service. Faculty and staff as well have many volunteer opportunities throughout the year. And you can learn more about sort of those groups by checking out our our slice, which is Student Leadership Involvement and Community Engagement Group. Education is another important way that we make connections with our community. Of course, our major purpose is, you know, undergraduate, graduate, postgraduate education. But we provide education at all stages of life. We have a preschool and kindergarten on campus. We have faculty and graduate students who go out into K to twelve to to teach in the classroom. We also have programs that are teaching the teachers about whether it's latest teaching techniques or research techniques and science. We have our high school oriented pre-college program. And then sort of at the other end of the spectrum, we have our Osher Lifelong Learning Institute. For students who are here on the campus. All seven of our colleges have service learning courses where the purpose of their course is to go out into the community. And work with community members to to solve, you know, try and solve some kind of a problem. So for arts and culture, you know, it's it's a. Been since our since our founding that we have been both an arts and a technology school. And that tradition has been sort of maintained, you know, throughout our history. And so we want to we build on the rich history of free expression and the capacity of creativity to. To really sort of touch people in a in a different way. You know that it's kind of it's kind of the beginning, the ending of C N U that the technology and the arts. And so as we want to make sure that. Our, we know that our tech technology and our research, our science is is out in the community. But we want to make have our wonderful arts facilities, our arts programs have make the same kind of connection. Next slide. So Shenley Park, it it comes into almost every part of our master plan. They're such an important neighbor. And so. We do never, we never want to be seen as a as a barrier to Shenley Park for our neighbors. And so that we feel like the making the improved connections to Shenley Park, whether it's. Pedestrians or cyclists, or whether it's a calmer, safer through street. All of that helps to strengthen, not just the. The the experience for the neighbors who might be walking there, but for people who come to Shenley Park from all across the city or all across the region. And so that that relationship is mutually beneficial. And we have had great conversations with the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. On a monthly basis, and we're really looking for synergies where. Projects that we're doing might have, you know, reached reach out into the park and make some improvements, and whether it's in landscaping or paths or. Or stormwater management. We've even when the special plan, you know, is is. Is finishes and we're moving on from the approval process, we're looking forward to those those conversations and that partnership continuing. Next slide. While we love going out into the community, we think we have a lot to offer on our on our campus for folks to come in and enjoy. Whether it's enjoying shows in our theater, whether it's music concerts in the College of Fine Arts or or down at the Carnegie Library. We have art galleries that are open to the public. Our library, our main library has actually just recently, since the since the pandemic reopened for for public to come in and enjoy. Of course, we have our our stadium, the cut and the mall and all pathways that we have and that we're going to develop that are really are open to anyone. We have events throughout the year that the community enjoys our our spring carnival, our sweepstakes races in Shenley Park and. Booths nearby and the the rides, homecoming in the fall. With the football game and our Kilti Band, Fourth of July fireworks is very popular, and we have. Seventeen Division Three sports teams that have events all year round. We have a lot of public art. One thing we're we are working towards with the help of our public yard, our public art curator. Is developing a better plan for for signage. There is an online guide that was developed by a group of students. Where folks can move around, whether it's outside or in our buildings, almost all of which are open to the public. And so you can walk through and and enjoy much of our art collection. And then we've 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 talked about the importance of Shen Park. Next slide, please. So Craig Street. We are so happy that we sort of are starting to sort of see the pandemics weighing a little bit. It's sort of coming and going, but. Our relationship with Craig Street and seeing our students and our senior C N U community. Sort of patronizing the restaurants and doing some shopping. It's it's been great to see a comeback. And we've made a commitment in our participation with with Ovid. To support the the goals of the business owners and the residents. And we do that not just by showing up at a meeting, but also offering technical support. We offered financial support in in opening up our parking or being away parking lot. For free parking evenings and weekends. So folks who want to come down and and do some shopping or go to museums or or. Enjoy and go around the great restaurants in the area can do so without sort of being concerned about about paying for parking. Next slide. So we think that there are a lot of small things that could be done to to strengthen Craig Street. Whether it's looking at some unique pavement treatments that that are sort of nice to look at, but also help to increase pedestrian safety by making drivers sort of aware that. You know, something something different is happening there. Putting in more street trees, which we know will help with stormwater, but also make it a more enjoyable experience. We have a lot of restaurants that have some outdoor seating, but how do we maximize that, whether it's on South Craig Street? Or at the rear of some of the buildings, which most of many of which used to be single family homes. So there's kind of a backyard. Maybe there's opportunities for for pop-up retail for looking at smaller independent merchants to come in for special weekends to. To show their wares and make it more of a of a marketplace. And then perhaps looking at maybe giving up a parking space here or there. To creatively think about how to get more outdoor seating in places that may not have another option for it on their property. Let's see. Next slide. All right. And then the last goal for 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 neighborhood protection is that is our positive economic impact on the region. So I'm not going to go through and and cite all of these numbers, but you know, we're we're very proud of the work that is done to. Contribute to the the tax revenue coffers of of the city and the state. We have many research programs that grow into startups. Back in twenty twenty, it was three hundred and forty. So now it's maybe it's three hundred and fifty, you know, over the last, you know, ten or ten or twelve years. Nearly twenty thousand jobs, whether it's jobs here directly at Carnegie Mellon, whether it's tourism jobs and. By our estimation, three and a quarter billion dollars of economic impact. And as we continue to to grow, that number is only going to is only going to go up. So we're grateful to be a part of the vibrant community that is City of Pittsburgh and Western Pennsylvania. And we're happy that we can, we're happy that we can contribute. Next slide. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. I'm going to take over for the last few slides. And we're moving to the section. So that kind of wraps up the document itself, all the eight chapters of the document. Great work, Jenny. Really great, great, great way to kind of sum up all of those very complex components of it. What we're going to talk about now is the piece, some of the statements there are some of the questions and thoughts that came out of the briefing two weeks ago. The first of which was what were some of the community comments that had come through our development activities meetings, our neighborhood meetings, our. Kind of block by block meetings, our town hall meetings that we had. And so we've collated all of those comments or kind of collated those and kind of condensed them down into a number of buckets. That show really what what those where the focus was on it. And there really is a handful of focus items. One was on mobility. The idea of crosswalks, and we talked a lot about that, improving crosswalks, especially we heard Fifth Clyde, Fifth Neville and the railroad. Are are particularly particularly problematic intersections. That we are targeting to try to fix. The idea being the new light that was put in at Fifth and Clyde across from Central Catholic as an example of a good version of that world. We were able to leverage a development project of the new residence hall on Fifth Avenue to add to the the new light that benefits such as. Our our students that are going to there, but also the Central Catholic students and faculty and staff and the workers at W Q E D as well. Bikes, bikes, we talked about missing connections, especially along the edges. And so that's a lot of what our bike plan is, is how do we how do we make sure we connect that? Shuttle buses. This is one that we know is one that is is thorny, and we're trying to work through. The idea of they come through, they idle when they're trying to do their time catch up. We will have a bus and then five minutes later, another university pit or another institution will have a bus that goes through it this thing. And neither of them are completely full. How can we start to coordinate those? And parking, parking, of course, is always a big issue. We one hundred percent and will continue to always support. The residential parking permit programs that are around there that that that's going to help mitigate impacts of being next to neighbors. We also think that there's a lot it has to do with now with this kind of return of this this new model that we have, like what we're doing right now with the Zoom. Where we're going to be able to capitalize on more people working at home more often. And how we can use that to help mitigate parking impacts. And when it comes to infrastructure, there are kind of two big ideas. One was stormwater management, who will continue to be a leader in that. Jen mentioned the mall stormwater master plan. It's really, it's really important to note. That on a given, any given major rain, university will immediately capture over a half a million gallons of water in our various facilities. That's a half a million gallons that are not going into this into the four mile run watershed immediately. We talked a lot about tree canopy, and we talked, we have our tree preservation and restoration plan. And we think that that's super important. We, as Jen said, for a number of reasons, including urban heated island effect. For beauty, but it's also they also work as great boundaries. And so we have a number of our hillsides. That are up against some of our neighbors, whether it be the Shenley Park, Shenley Park. Or against a squirrel hill or shady side neighbors. We want to be able to kind of continue to reinforce those hillsides to help make those boundaries. When we talked about there's, the the next one is on neighborhood engagement. Why were we looking to expand the E M I district in those three small areas? It really is important. We think that, as Jen noted, that we zone what we own. It basically that the master plan is guiding. Our properties that we own. We think that this process is a really good one. It's a particularly rigorous project process. And it is a process that has lots of accountability as we move forward. It also, we think, provides a kind of comfort level for for our neighbor, neighboring communities that. If a project, if a property is zoned E M I, and we don't have it identified as a development project. That we are not planning to do anything on that. We think that that's a really important commitment that we want to make. As Kevin noted at the very beginning, those all three of those areas that we're proposing to rezone. We have no development plans in this master plan for them. And and it's interesting to think, especially if you think about it, in some of those development districts. For example, maybe the R M district that the property is on Fifth and Neville are at. It we actually there are more development rights under the existing zoning that there is under the E M I zoning that we're proposing. And so we're actually kind of reducing the potential impacts by rezoning. We're not just providing ideas about Craig Street. I think Jen talked a lot about that. And for that, and we're actually working with Oakland Business Improvement District on looking at ways that we can make that along, make long-term commitments on that. Preservation of existing buildings is a really important one. We talk, we actually, as part of the master plan in the appendix, we've created. Very, very detailed inventory of campus buildings, not just saying how big they are and when they opened and what their uses are, but also who are the architect? What was the style of it? Are they subject to historic preservation requ- guidelines, et cetera? I want to jump back to the improved and increased communications with neighbors. One of the things that we have committed to is that Megan and I will, we will, between the two of us, go to. Any of the community meetings that we that are open, that we're invited, that that we're welcome at. So we go to, we monthly, we go to the Baca and the Shayside Action Coalition meetings. We participate in monthly meetings with Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy and the other neighbors, the other neighborhood groups as as we're able to or as as we're asked are able to. But that is, we don't want to be just going to our community partners when we're asking for something. We want to be part of the relation, part of the team and part of that greater relationship. Last question on this was when our recreational facilities are open to the public? Now they're moving past the pandemic stage. We're in a more open position again. The outdoor facilities are open, so people can go run in the track. People can cross campus. People can go lay in the grass. That's really an open campus for that. If you want to next slide, please. The next big comment that came out, and this was really a positive comment that we we really appreciated, was kind of a big, a more in-depth. Look at what the development sites are. And kind of more clearly identifying them. And so what we've done is really addressed this. And I want to note, we have not done the entire document. We're working on that. We did three, three pages as test cases, so you can kind of see. Where we're looking at doing it. We went and asked for additional comments on. So basically, what we've done is we, rather than having a string of development sites on one side of the master plan. And a map showing them what we've done is we've dedicated an entire half page of each. Of the or one side of a double page to each development district. So for example, here, the number two district, which is redevelopment of our facilities building. What we're doing is we're dedicating an entire page to that. We are expanding the 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 axonometric, so that actually more clearly shows it. And we've also labeled both the building on it as well as all the adjacent buildings and roads. We've actually given a much more detailed level of what the setbacks are and the height restrictions that we're proposing on each of these development sites. And then we've included a keynote on the bottom, if you see a new location map. That shows where all of these pieces are, and it shows where the buildings that we're taking these measurements are. For example. On this one for the F M S building redevelopment site. We're showing that the setback would be five feet from the Robert Morabian Collaborative Nation Center to the north. And twenty feet from Scott Hall in the south. And the east would be five feet from Bill Simon, and then the west would be ten feet from the railroad. Showing that exactly where the contacts are for that. One of the things that's really important to note that we included in our development site, kind of the 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 the. Name rank and serial numbers for each of them that was is not required by the zoning code are those last two items. We think that these are important, so we're not just looking at like how big and how and where a building goes. But what it includes in some of these other components include mobility, such as the Hammer Schlag Drive Drive Bike Boulevard, that would be part of this development site. And public realm improvements, so that we're we're really kind of codifying these commitments to making these mobility and public realm improvements as part of the development projects. So this is one example. We can go to the next page. You can see the first, we did three test cases of that to show how those would look throughout the document. If this is, this is, we can talk about this and when we get to the question period from the commission. If this is a good direction that we're going, then we would use the recess to update the remaining seventeen districts or seventeen development sites. In the document and then provide an updated version before the September proposed action. Let's go to the next slide, please. Last slide that we have, we just wanted to give an overview of the schedule. We did not do that in the last one without being useful to show just how the kind of. That how in-depth and how rigorous and thorough the planning process has been for this institutional master plan. We actually started the master planning process in the summer of twenty twenty, when we retained our consultants who are on the on the call here with us. We really got into the and we spent the latter part of twenty twenty really digging into a lot of our concepts and ideas. And then we have the kind of major phases, which we did an introduction with all the community groups, which is to be broken up by. City meetings that we had with review sessions, including the target performance target meetings shown in orange. We had a series of public meetings and town halls with the community shown in purple. And then with also the immediate numbers, partner institutions, neighborhood groups, you can see the blocks of when we kind of held those. And then we also have been doing a similar outreach on campus, including university town hall, university campus groups. University Design Review Committee, and of course, at the end of the day, who we report to with the Property and Facilities Committee. So we can go to the last slide. I think that should wrap it up. For where we are, again, just want to note, we have made this document. wrap it up, uh, for where we are. Again, just want to note, we have made this document available uh, for anybody that's interested, and we have it on our webpage to download both the document, the main master plan document, the appendix, as well as the tra- the transportation improvements, uh, study. All three of those documents are available to download. We have also paper copies that we put out across campus and at the Carnegie Library for people to look at. And we have an email for people that have any questions that have been emailing Jen and Megan and I throughout the entire process. So, with that all being said, uh, like to, that's the end of our overview or overviews and slides, so we'll be up to questions.
Great, thank you so much. We are not taking public comment at this time because we are in the briefing session. We are opening the floor to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Dietrich.
Bob, and can you elaborate more on the community process and, uh, different, the groups that you met with, um, and if there were different kind of geographies of concerns, I could see some issues, uh, particularly some of the things in different neighborhoods. Um, and I gather most of it's right in the, oh, nearby Oakland, but also Shady Side and so forth. Thanks.
Yeah, actually, if we could go back to the slideshow uh, where we left off and maybe advance maybe a four or five slides. Um, Commissioner, we can show you the, the amount of meetings that we had done. We talked a little bit about it last time. If we could just, because we included the last slideshow in this deck, if you can keep advancing. Uh, so I'm going forward, sorry, can we should be able to go forward. Yeah, keep going a couple more slides. That's the right, yep, um, planning process, there we go.
Yeah.
So Commissioner, this is, this is an outline of all the various set, uh, meetings that we had done over the last, uh, several year, or year and a half. So you get the, the box on the left is all of our campus partners, including the design review committee, all, everything from faculty senate, et cetera. On the right is all the community and city meetings that we've held. And you can see a lot of them were held on multiple occasions. Uh, we had with, we meet, we met regularly with BACA, presented them three times. Uh, the kind of six major groups that we've met when we've made kind of permanent commitments to participate with our Bellfield Area Citizens Association, uh, Oakland Planning and Development Corporation, the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, the Shady Side Action Coalition, the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, and, uh, the Oakland Business Improvement District, as well as the Oakland Task Force. And so you can see we've met lots with all of those, uh, groups. We also had a series of town halls, Commissioner. Uh, we had an open house, we had three sets of town halls, both in May last year and September last year at different times of the day, which was, we, we sent out, um, uh, invitations to everybody that is in our distribution list that we have when we do outreach to, to our neighbors. We also have worked a lot with the city, our city partners, including, uh, council people, council persons, as well as various groups, both in city planning and DOMI, uh, as well as other agencies, including Port Authority and the Green Building, uh, Rebuilding Alliance and the Peta and Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Report.
Jen, were you gonna add to that?
Nope, Bob, I think Bob covered it. Thank you.
So, you know, just wondering if there were differences by those geographies.
Oh, I see. I, I get it. I'm sorry, I missed that. I forgot about that. Yes, it'd be, um, so essentially, it's, as you can imagine, there's different impact. Different groups had different, uh, concerns of impacts. Squirrel Hill was a lot of questions about connections as well as parking impacts. The Craig Street Business District has really been focused on how we can kind of revitalize or kind of re-encourage or, um, the, the, the Craig Street, uh, business district between Fifth and Forbes. Uh, Bellfield Area has been really, uh, a lot of the concerns have been focused on the shuttle buses that kind of circulate out to the shady side areas. Um, uh, the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, a lot of the, a lot of the discussions that we've had with them over the last year have really focused on how we can make better connections to Shunley Park from campus. You notice if, if you've ever walked along Through Street, Through Street is essentially a parking lot with an overgrown hillside with no real kind of good connection into the park. Uh, in fact, one of our leaders on the university was here for several months before he even realized the kind of breadth of how big Shunley Park was, uh, immediately next to campus. So what we are proposing and working with Parks Conservancy are a series of kind of ways to make that, those connections better. The first of which, we're actually going to be starting, we'll start construction here in the next few weeks, which is at Tech Street and, uh, Shunley Drive and Through Street and that kind of little intersection there. As part of our new Highmark Center for Health and Wellness that's under construction, we're moving some of the streetlights around and we're rebuilding, uh, that corner and working with Parks Conservancy who has, um, who is looking at rebuilding the original entry garden at, uh, at Through and Shunley Drive. We are working with them and we're actually providing a lot of the low ground work and a lot of the, of the concrete work that has allowed them to kind of not spend the money on that, so they can spend additional money on the kind of above ground, the plantings and the historic garden that was there. We're looking to do a similar type, uh, piece down at the other end of Through Street by the new scape hall project down towards FIPS, uh, with Parks Conservancy. And of course, the long, the long range, uh, kind of dream of all of us is this third connection onto Flagstaff Hill, uh, from, at the end of the cut that, that Jen talked about. So that kind of gives, there's a kind of myriad of idea of, of, um, pieces. A lot of, kind of one big underlying theme through all, all of this, Commissioner, has been the idea of, of better integrating campus into the, into the East End community. And also when we do that, also making sure that we're not having spill over, unintentional spill over effects.
Thanks, that's helpful. And with the parks, um, well, with FIPS and thinking with parks, was there more on the bike side to those kind of connections? And I'm also thinking about Through Street and this, you know, uh, the accessibility for disabled people, which is extremely poor.
That's one of the things that we've actually, that was a focus that we've been working on with DOMI. And as part of our transportation, uh, our traffic improvement study, is this, uh, is looking to pursue the idea of, of, of branding through Tech and Margaret Morrison as a neighborway. Um, we have a pot, we have some utility work that we're looking to do over the next few summers. And we're looking, we're exploring the ideas and we've had some initial discussions with DOMI and with Public Works about using that as a test case to see what kind of improvements we can make, you know, or do we look at maybe Through Street as a one-way way condition? Or, uh, build bump outs at, uh, you know, uh, by the end of the east-west walkway on Margaret Morrison, uh, adding, um, flashers or things like that, um, and larger depressed curbs having mid-block crossings uh, as well. So we're looking at a number of different ideas that we want to do some pilot testing over the next few years on and working with DPW on.
That sounds promising. Thanks, Bob.
Yep.
Commissioner Dick, you had a follow-up?
Just a follow-up on, um, one of the questions that Commissioner, um, Dietrich just asked, and then I have another one. Uh, what are your specifics, uh, about what do you plan to do to improve the intersections at, uh, Fifth and Neville and Fifth and Morewood? I've seen what you've done at Fifth and Clyde, and it's, it's, it's very nice. You put in the level pedestrian signal and so on, but these are the Morewood and, um, Neville are both very dangerous for both drivers and pedestrians. And I'd like to know what's, that you're going to do there.
So we have more, our plan, oh, sorry, do you want to do that and then come back?
Second question when you finish that, then, okay.
Okay, uh, so to, uh, we have much more detail than the analysis and study that we've done in Fifth and, and Morewood. So, um, although we have some early ideas on Fifth and Neville, but we want to talk to the Port Authority about that as part of any BRT work that they'd have to do there. The Fifth and Morewood one is the one we've done a lot of work on, and we actually are hoping that we can partner with the city and the Port Authority to, the main piece is obviously, we all know that the two sides of Morewood don't align. Uh, so you get that kind of weird little dog leg you have to do as, as you move, if you're driving across there. That then has made the pedestrians, the pedestrian state there just really not, really bad. On top of that, there is a major bus facility there, especially outbound on Fifth Avenue. And because of that retaining wall that is there, there's no room for pedestrian or bus, bus patrons to wait for a bus. And so it gets really crowded, you have a really bad condition of a lot of things going on. And so what our, 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 our kind of scenario that we're proposing and working with the city and the Port Authority on is this idea of could be realigned Morewood by taking, moving Morewood onto our property at, in front of the Mudge House on the west side, so that we're aligning the two sides of the street to make it a more traditional plus intersection. That would then allow for more traditional left turn lanes for movements to happen. It would widen out the side and give a wider area for the sidewalks, have a more traditional sidewalk crossing that we could put in there where the, and we would then, uh, have to upgrade the lights as course as part of that. And we could put an advanced walk site, uh, signal on there, so that pedestrians get the head start when the light goes green. The other thing that we can do as part of that is since we have to tear down some of that old historic retaining wall there to move the road over, we would then, that, at that point, if the wall's coming down, we're thinking at that point, let's lay that area back and push the bus shelter back onto the university property so that the sidewalk is wider, make a bigger bus station there, much more, much more, what's like at Fifth and, or Forbes and Morewood. So that there's a bigger waiting area and that the pedestrians that are moving through the area aren't kind of conflicting with the patrons for the bus that are waiting there. So that's, we actually have a really detailed plan. We put together some pricing strategies. And we have some ideas of how we can maybe get into a shared, a three-way partnership to do that. We have the same idea for Neville. I think a lot of it has to do with when you have that really broad, uh, long boss on the north side of Fifth Avenue, because there's that weird little island that is there because of the old EBO bus, bus routing that is happening there. And so one of the things we've talked about is there a way to kind of throw that down a little bit at that corner? That would require us working with some of the other partners in the neighborhood that are not university owned, that's, I'm thinking the condo building that is between, that is on that north, uh, northwest corner of Fifth and Neville, where we, we do not own property there. Uh, so that would be somebody, we'd have to be working with that or that, that condo association as well.
Okay, and then my, my second question was, uh, having to do, what, if any, cooperative efforts are, have been or are planned to be, uh, made with area, with the University of Pittsburgh, where your interests and sometimes your campuses, uh, touch such as North Craig Street, South Craig Street and, uh, Shunley Park and so on. There are lots of areas where you overlap in many ways, and, uh, I'd like, I wonder if there's any cooperation going on between the two of you.
Actually, that's a really great question, and it's actually a really important question. Not just for the institutions in Craig Street, but for the region, you know, the University of Pittsburgh and Carnegie Mellon are two of the kind of pistons of the economic engine of Western Pennsylvania right now. And one of the things I think that is really remarkable about having two institutions that are so close to each other, but don't necessarily compete at, with each other, but actually reinforce each other. Uh, we think that that's, that relationship is really important. So we've actually, over the last two years, we've been, they've been meeting regularly with our counterparts at Pitt, probably in about a six to eight week cadence, every month, a month and a half or so, we even have regular meetings with uh, the university architect at Pitt and their, and their real estate folks as well about looking that. We've also embedded them, uh, embedded OBIT in that discussion and the business owners as part of Craig Street to think about what is happening in that mixed zone area. Um, and how do we, you know, that, there's, um, the Innovation PGH group has also really been focused on how do we make Craig Street this great part of the Innovation District where, you know, if you are, uh, visiting, you would see that University of Pittsburgh's there, CMU is there, if you're a company, you can benefit from being proximate to both institutions. And so I think it's, we're, we're still working, there's still a lot, a long way to go on that, but I think the fact that we've embedded Pitt, embedded OBIT, embedded the business, uh, business owners, and now also bringing, bringing in Innovation PGH, which has the funding support, you know, of the, of the big foundations in the region. I think that that's, this hopefully is an opportunity, kind of a once in a very long time opportunity for us to be able to propel Craig Street forward.
Uh, I hope you can intensify those efforts, particularly if you're both, you know, just doing new, new plans. I think it's the ideal to do it. Thank you.
Yep.
And, uh, thank you for coming back with those reformatted slides with the tenure development sites. They are very helpful to see what's being proposed, uh, in a little bit more detail. Um, so I do like that format. I, I think that's helpful moving forward. Uh, one or two notes on those. Um, in some places, there's discussion in the mobility section of each, uh, related to parking. And it'll say up to X percent, or I'm sorry, X number of spaces. I think there's one or two that say no parking.
That's correct.
That mean that the other, the ones that don't mention parking are still in flux? What's, what's the commitment there?
No, no, if we, if we're saying that there's not parking associated with the development site, we do not, we do not plan on putting parking at the development site. It is important to know.
If it's silent as to parking.
If it's silent, that means we're not proposing parking on that site.
Okay.
Um, and it's important to note that we treat, um, and we've done this, or we've always done this and we will continue to do this, we treat parking as a system. So that when we, when we build a building, for example, TCS, when that just recently opened, we had a number of the faculty and they're like, oh, great, we get, we, we, we're gonna get parking under our building. I'm like, no, you're gonna get in line like everybody else for parking in the system. Um, and it's based on seniority and there's pay rates, so that closer in parking pays more, things like that. And so there's a kind of law, there's a big development. The university has created what's called a Parking and Transportation Advisory Committee, which advises the university on all those components. And one of the things that we've been doing is working on creating kind of tiers of rates so that we can incentivize people to kind of park near their buildings, but at the same time, we're not, we specifically do not commit that just because you have parking in your building that you get that parking.
But that's helpful to know, and, and we appreciate that thoughtfulness, um. And, and there is the commitment to no net new parking, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. And, and then in envisioning those tenure sites, uh, looking through the urban design guidelines for each, there are some points that are a little bit more robust, especially with regards to materials. Um, in most cases, there's a mention of high-quality materials and then the contextual materials around it. If there are any prohibited materials, or if there could be more specificity in some of those that don't get into, um, you know, whether glass is used. I, I know in a few, it says there'll be glass on, on certain levels, there'll be natural materials, but some of those other sections are silent to that. Um, so if, if those could just be addressed throughout, there's prohibited or encouraged materials in each of those.
And what, and what we do, we do that, we can, we'll take another pass through and kind of bolster that. We do talk about specifically, there are, there are materials that we do prohibit. Ephes, mirrored glass are two that come immediately to mind, that we prohibit on campus specifically. Um, we also understand that in our districts are a little bit different, and so in some cases, we want to have, um, we want to allow maybe a little more contemporary architecture to take place. So we're not trying to be prescriptive with materials, but we are trying to be making sure that we are, uh, requiring contextual materials. But we'll take a, 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 kind of deeper run at that to make sure that we're, we're, we're kind of making sure that that's bolstered and understood. But we do, that, that, it is, you know, there's, there are materials that we have specifically said that we will not use on campus.
Right, and, and that's the impression you get reading it. It's just not always explicit, for example, the Ephes. I assume, and I'm not gonna see Ephes, but.
So maybe what we'll do, Rachel, what might be useful is, uh, we, we could look at reformatting and maybe we could bullet point those things rather, because they're buried in text. Uh, you know, when, so maybe if we bullet point them, they will stand out a little bit more, so we can talk about this. We'll take, we'll take a run at that and look at that, and we can report back at that in, in September.
Okay, yeah, I think that's helpful, both for city planning and the university in the future, when you're looking at projects, then you're not looking at many, many different sections throughout the IMP. If you're kind of looking in one spot for that, it's easy for everybody to be on the same page.
Yep.
Great. I don't have any additional comments, any other commissioner comments? No, well, thank you very much for the thorough presentation and all of your thoughtful design, and we will see you again. Are we seeing you in September? I don't know how long it'll take you to do any of these updates.
We'll be, we, if, if, if we're given the time, we'll be ready.
In the fall.
In the fall. All right, we'll see it. Let Steph, Steph will let you know. Okay.
Yep.
Um, and that concludes our briefing portion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so it is 2:48 right now. We will come back at three o'clock to start hearing in action. Thank you. Uh, so it is two forty-eight right now. We will come back at three o'clock to start hearing in action. Okay, commissioners, if you are back, please turn on your cameras. We'll give everybody a few minutes to, to filter in.
Commissioner O'Neill, this is Commissioner, welcome here.
Hi, Commissioner Bolton-Burton-Balk. Thank you.
You're welcome. Great job.
Thanks. I hope you're going somewhere fun.
Louisville.
That's good, good. And city planning, do we have a, a court reporter coming?
We do.
We do. Are they on? I might not see.
They are.
The attendee list and.
I'll promote them.
Joe, you promoted. Okay.
And court reporter, can you hear me?
Hello, yes, this is Dylan, the court reporter.
Hi Dylan.
Hello. Ready to begin with you are. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have everyone here. Okay. This is the time and place for the July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two Planning Commission Hearing in Action. I am Rach O'Neill and acting chair today. Uh, we will get started as soon as I pull up an agenda. So for today's hearing in action, uh, we will be going through the approval of commission minutes, correspondence, hearing in action. And then plan of lots and director's report, if any, uh, approval of commission minutes. Do we have any of those today? I don't think so.
Yeah, let's hold off because, excuse me, sorry. Uh, there were some issues with the past month. I want to make sure everything's sorted and everyone's had a chance to see them again. So let's just hold off for now.
Okay, great. Um, and then correspondence, we do have four items of correspondence regarding the, uh, Carding and Millan University Institutional Master Plan. And those I will read off in just a minute. And then. Okay, those are, um, all in favor and they are from, let's see, Bellfield Area Citizens Association, the Oakland Task Force, Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy and Oakland Planning and Development Corporation. And we will now move on to hearing in action today. But before we do that, we will do a roll call and access check. So we will start with Chair Mondor. Vice Chair Burton Falk.
Present.
Uh, Commissioner Mingo. Commissioner Askey.
Commissioner Brown.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Present.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Present.
Commissioner Dick.
Present.
And Commissioner O'Neill, present. Uh, so we have two items for hearing in action today. Uh, please note that D C P dash H N dash twenty twenty-one zero zero eight four one. That was the four twelve Boulevard of the Allies Historic Nomination has been continued, uh, pending scheduling of a development activities meeting. Uh, so the remaining two items for hearing in action today are D C P dash H N dash twenty twenty-one dash zero one six zero eight. Murray Hill Historic District Expansion and then D C P Z D R twenty twenty-one dash zero five two five six. Uh, six three five Smithfield Street. Uh, so we will be starting with item B, the Murray Hill Historic Hist- Sorry, uh, Murray Hill Historic District Expansion and Historic Nomination in the Squirrel Hill North Neighborhood. And we will start with Ms. Quinn.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, my name's Sarah Quinn. I'm the preservation planner for the city. Um, before you today is the two property expansion proposed for the Murray Hill Historic District. This expansion includes properties eleven sixty-three and eleven sixty-five, which, um, you can see on your screen in front of you. Um, the dates of construction were rough as nineteen hundred. Um, and the side-by-side houses are three-bay, three-story brick residential structures built in the colonial revival style constructed around nineteen hundred. They feature two dormers on the third floor and identic- are an identical match to each other. They are remnants of a longer street, streetscape that stretched on the eastern side of the street, which included five additional houses. They were demolished in nineteen sixty-nine to create the King Mellon Library. Two remaining structures from this streetscape are before you. Um, let's see. Murray Hill Avenue takes its name from an early spring squirrel hill estate known by James B. Murray, who was a partner in Lion Shorm Company in Iron Mill in Pittsburgh's South Side, was president of the Exchange National Bank in downtown Pittsburgh. Um, Murray purchased the land in eighteen sixty-four and then eventually subdivided. Um, and in eighteen eighty-nine, a gentleman named Lorenzo T. Yoder purchased the entire Murray Hill property from Anne Murray, the widow James Murray. The land was further subdivided and, um, the first regu- and our, excuse me, in eighteen ninety, the land was subdivided into residential lots known as Ardschill Terrace Plan of Lots and became one of the first resident, residential streets to be developed in Squirrel Hill. According to the Pittsburgh History and Landmarks Association, most homes in Murray Hill developed in the early part of the nineteen hundreds. In general, this northern slope was rich in domestic architecture, the eighteen nineties and nineteen twenties period. As one of the first streetcar suburbs in Pittsburgh East End, Murray Hill was highly valued for its country-like atmosphere, yet close to city amenities. It has impressive collection of outstanding houses, such as Colonial Revival and many organized and unique streetscapes along the winding cobblestone road. The Historic Review Commission felt that this property was significant under criteria eight, which is this exemplification of a pattern of neighborhood development or settlement, significant to the cultural history or traditions of the city. Eighteen sixty-three Murray, eighteen sixty-three and sixty-five Murray Hill were included originally in Len Lorenzo Yoder's Archon Terrace Plan of Lots for Murray Hill Avenue. Although eighteen sixty, eleven sixty-three and eleven sixty-five are without their porches. There are several other homes along Murray Hill, which are also missing porches, ten twenty-two, ten twenty-six and several others. These were most likely removed during the nineteen sixties. However, their removal does not diminish the integrity of the district as a whole. So what I can tell you is that when I was here for briefing, you asked for several items. And if I might share my screen. Thank you, Ann. Here is, I have an email that was received from the, the Lenz family regarding the property um, at eleven sixty-five Murray Hill Avenue, saying they have no objection to the designation of their home. Um, I suspect this is because they already thought it was listed. Um, the other thing I can tell you is that, um, in the nomination, there's indication that, um, the style of properties located, here, stop sharing. The style of pro- properties located along Murray Hill Avenue include Queen Anne Tudor Revival. There are several mid-century modern properties, but Colonial Revival is the most prevalent of those, of those all. Um, and I can also tell you that there is no information regarding who the architect of the properties is. I sent an email to the nominator, um, letting him know what your questions were. And he informed me that he was out of the country and did his best to provide some of the answers of those that I've provided you here. But, um, beyond that, um, I don't know if he's here right now. I also sent him an email this morning, letting him know that should he choose to comment today, he should, he should be online today to do so. Um, but I received no response from him. So really what I have So really, what I have for you all right now is what I've shared with you. So if you have any other questions, I can try and answer them best I can, but.
Thank you.
Sure.
At this time, we take public testimony on this item. You have three minutes to speak. And if you raise your hand, we will unmute you for those three minutes. Do we have anybody wanting to weigh in on this item from the public?
I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Great, thank you. And so now we open the floor to commissioners. You were so thorough, Ms. Quinn. My only question is, we didn't hear anything further from the university who owns the other house.
No, no, I mean, I have, I actually, I mean, I have copies of all the letters that I sent to those folks. What I will tell you is that my understand, when the dam, they actually did have a development activities meeting for this nomination. And I can share that with you, I don't know why we don't use these very much when it comes to nominations. But what I can tell you is that the university is currently using it as office space. They plan to continue to use it as office space. There's really no objection, I've heard from the university. They're aware that, you know, we're here today, so.
Okay, and just to recap, the Historic Review Commission recommended?
They provided, they voted to provide a positive recommendation to city council.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so the recommended motion on the table is that the Planning Commission vote to provide a positive recommendation regarding the Murray Hill Avenue Expansion Nomination to City Council. Do we have any commissioners who'd like to make that motion? Commissioner Dick? Thank you, and do we have a second?
Commissioner Burton Falk?
Commissioner Burton Falk, seconds. Someone get Administrator Layman, you look perplexed. Do you need to weigh in on this?
I do not, I'm perplexed by an email, I apologize.
That's, I I didn't call you out, sorry about that. Okay, so we will go in order for a vote. Commissioner Mandor, Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo, Commissioner Askey, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
And Commissioner O'Neil, aye, so moved. The nomination is recommended.
Thank you, everyone, have a good afternoon.
Thank you. And so we will move on to our final item in hearing in action. This is DCP-ZDR-2021-05256-635 Smithfield Street. This is a demolition, new construction, and change of use to residential in the central business district neighborhood. Mr. Kunak. Mr. Kunak, Kunak, you're unmuted.
Thank you. One moment, please, while we do a sound check with our applicants.
Wildman Chalmers is here.
Thomas Bost is here as well.
Thank you, and to confirm, it's only the two of you who'll be presenting?
Correct.
Thank you. Again, good afternoon, commissioners. This is project development plan application, DCPZDR-2021-05256, filed for demolition, new construction, exterior operations, and change of use to multi-unit residential. This project includes demolition of the existing two-story structure located at 639 and 641 Smithfield Street, and new construction of a one-story structure for use as lobby area and retail sales and services in a nine-story tower and elevator tower connected, stair and elevator tower connected to the existing structure at 635 Smithfield Street. Exterior alterations and new construction of a single-story ninth-floor addition and exterior balconies are proposed at 635 Smithfield Street for use as street-level retail sales and services and change of use of floors two to eight to multi-unit residential. 65 dwelling units are permitted by right, approximately 37 dwelling units are proposed. There are no requests to the zoning board of adjustment. Staff design review is held on June 13, 2022. CDA review was not recommended. The design review memo is attached. A development activities meeting was held virtually on June 9, 2022, with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. The recommended motion is that the Plan Commission of the City of Pittsburgh approves this project development plan with the following conditions. DOMI shall review the final plans and issue the necessary DOMI approvals prior to issuing the record of zoning approval. And the final construction document shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning minister prior to issuing the final record of zoning approval. And with that, I will turn it over to our applicants.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon. This project, as Kevin said, is 635 to 641 Smithfield Street. This is an existing building of 635, which is an existing eight-story building with a proposed addition on the ninth story. The 639 and 641 building shown on the right side of the site plan is scheduled to be slated for demolition. The existing building does not have any historic characteristics to it, and it's not built in conformance to today's standards with regards to structural floor systems and retail requirements. The proposal of three street trees, which are required by zoning code, have been provided. The street trees are kind of interlaced between the vaults of the Duquesne Light, as well as other electrical and mechanical vaults in the street itself or in the sidewalk. And we are proposing that there would be a retail area at the existing 635 Smithfield Street, and then a lobby for the units above on 641 Smithfield Street. If you'd go to the next slide. This is the demolition slide, it's showing the extent of the demolition. The existing building, 635, will only have minor interior demolition, exterior demolition of replacement windows that were put in. They will be removed and replaced with new windows to meet today's energy standards. 641 will be demolished completely. That is the old Smithfield Cafe, shown in the image to your right. That is the building that has had multiple additions and facades added to it, most of which are not architecturally appropriate. And that's why, one of the largest reasons we're proposing to demolish it, as well as it really doesn't meet today's street face requirements as far as downtown, good design, lots of glass, and really engage in the public. You could go to the next slide. The next slide demonstrates the material use, as well as the existing building, which is the neoclassical building on the left-hand side of the left elevation. And that is also showing balconies that are protruding out from the building itself, where the living units will be, as well as a nine-story addition to the building for additional unit on top. Beyond the balconies, you'll see a gray area, which is an elevator and a stair tower, which is required by code to meet today's building code requirements for fire code. That building, that piece is set as far back on the property as possible. And it does match the materials that the balconies are made out of. The commissioners' comments for the last one is that they wanted the balconies to have a little more of a modern feel and to not take away from the existing historic building. So if you take a look at the east elevation, which is the elevation on the right-hand side, you'll see the balconies in white are being set back from the street face. And those balconies also have planters in them, as well as glass railing at the top to not obstruct the view for the patrons of the units themselves. If you go to the, oh, also the street face facade. Sorry, if you can go back for one second. Street face facade brings about a lot more glass and a lot more contextually appropriate materials, such as limestone and materials, durable materials that are appropriate for a downtown neighborhood area. The large limestone entrance in the center is the entrance to the multi-unit residential above. And the retail is on the left-hand side, which is really contextual to what I would consider downtown retail, which is large glass openings with transits above. If you want to proceed to the next one. These two slides were primarily put in here, which we didn't have last time, because the commissioners had asked to see all sides of the buildings, understand what they would look like. So these ones were added in to make sure that we had visibility to all sides. The west elevation is facing other buildings. You can see the adjacent buildings shown by diagonal hatches. And then the elevation to the north, which is the right one, faces an alleyway that has no street face on Smithfield itself. If you'd like to go to the next slide. These are some conceptual renderings of the proposed building. The red brick is really restoring that existing building. And then the balconies on the above 641 are really the balconies for the multi-unit. And then this also gives you a better perspective of what the stair tower and the elevator tower would look like. If you'd like to go to the next slide. Again, just some additional massing studies, so everyone understands how the massing works. You know, trying to be appropriate while respecting the existing historic building, but then also having this additive piece that's more modern, that addresses the building code requirements of the fire and life safety. The balconies on the left-hand side, you'll see that now you can see some of the furniture on there. One of the requests from the Planning Commission was to have some sort of opaque material so that we didn't see a bunch of furniture and a bunch of knickknacks from the ground. So really creating that opaque railing that created not only privacy, but I think it also cleans up the front of the facade so that there isn't any visible different attributes from the tenants in there that may have different pieces of furniture that may not line up or match the building. If you'd like to go to the next slide. And then again, just a quick detail on how these railings would be built. There's been a lot of questions around how we're tying the existing steel into the existing building, as well as how the planter boxes would work with the glass railings in between them. This was a specific request of the Planning Board Commission to better understand how this would be built as it is on Smithfield Street. It is fairly prominent location. If you want to go to the next slide. These are additional views. One, looking at the classic helical post-modern parking garage with the building next to it. And then kind of looking in both directions to give you a view of what the streetscape looks like on Smithfield Street. The Smithfield Street Cafe and the building have been abandoned for a significant amount of years. Really feel like this would be a great asset to the Smithfield corridor. This is not currently in the Smithfield corridor planning district that is currently being worked on. But we'd like to feel that the design has really met a lot of those requirements as far as transparency, retail, pedestrian safety, trees, and just really redevelopment of an area that really needs it in downtown. If you want to proceed, I think that maybe, no, one more slide. Again, just looking at it from a street view perspective of what this existing building looks like, as well as the Smithfield Cafe. That may be the last one, if you need one more, no. Basically, a breakdown. This is a breakdown of the floors and what the floor plans would look like. It talks about the uses, it talks about the square footage for each one. This is in the Golden Triangle District, so this is a parking exempt area. But it does talk about the allowable units, which is 65 allowable. And we're proposing less than that at this time. Proceed one more slide, please. Again, just some detailing of what the front facade could look like. And some, these are some inspiration images and some materiality for better understanding of what the final material would look like. And I think that that's the last slide. Thank you, let me know if you have any questions specific to the slides.
Thank you, and I forgot to ask you to introduce yourself before beginning your presentation.
Sure, my name is Chad Chalmers, Wildman Chalmers Design.
Thank you. We will now take public comment, and I'm going to also ask the public to introduce themselves and any entities that they represent. You will have three minutes. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand, and we will unmute you. Any hands raised?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And so we will open up the floor to commissioners for comments. I had one quick comment. So you, on the last slide, gave us some inspirational materials. Have you committed to? Have you committed to materials? Are there things that are still up in the air? Especially on the street level, we'd like to have some idea of what is going in there.
Sure, I'm going to have Thomas open up to that as far as committing to some of the materials. We have a lot of these materials, there are some limestone and some very durable materials down there. So, Thomas, do you want to speak to that about committing to the materials?
And Thomas, you are unmuted, or muted?
There we go, a little better?
Yes, and if you could just state your full name and who you represent.
Sure, Thomas Bost, developer, SCC Holdings.
Thank you.
So, material-wise, yes, we are pretty firm on the commitments. We are using granite along the base level to make sure that there's less maintenance issues. On the more historic side of 635, wood paneling or some kind of cement board-looking wood paneling will be used for that facade to give more of a historic look. The limestone, we are committed to as well, to have a real feature entrance for the lobby space. And then some kind of metal panel around the new modern space for the other retail, to show that those are distinct areas. So that level of commitment, we are, you know, what brand and everything, we haven't selected yet.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful. And we appreciate the reuse of the building and kind of getting this back on the, on the street. It has been vacant for a long time, so we appreciate the thoughtful design. Are there any other comments before commission, before we go to the motion? Hearing none, is there anybody to recommend the motion as stated by staff?
Don't move, Burton Falk.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk, anyone second?
Second. Okay.
Commissioner Blackwell, and we will go through roll call. Commissioner Mandor, Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo, Commissioner Askey, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
And Commissioner O'Neil, aye. All right, approved, subject to the conditions outlined in the report, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and that concludes our hearing in action today. So we will be moving on to plan of lots. And before I read them all, Mr. Shepke, are we able to batch these or do them all at once?
Commissioner O'Neil, we can batch all of the plan lots. Commissioner O'Neill, we can batch all of the plan lots this afternoon.
Okay, great. And too many PDFs, just a sec. Trying to find, okay. So for plan lots today, we have six plan of lots. That is DCP Lot twenty twenty-two dash nine fifty Panama Way, minor consolidation in Bloomfield. DCP Lot twenty twenty-two dash nine six six Cotton Way, minor subdivision in central Lawrenceville. DCP Lot twenty twenty-two nine five two, Halleck Street, minor consolidation in Allentown. DCP Lot twenty twenty-two nine nine four, Penn Avenue Minor Consolidation in Bloomfield. And DCP Lot twenty twenty-two nine twenty-eight, Thirty-Fourth Street, Minor Consolidation in Lower Lawrenceville. And finally, DCP Lot twenty twenty-two nine six eight, West Jefferson Street, Minor Consolidation in Central North. Mr. Shepke.
Thank you. The first item of plan of lots today is Panama Way. This is the proposed consolidation of four parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have frontage on Liberty Avenue and would be eight thousand ten square feet in area. A parking lot and a commercial building are located on the subject property. And the recommended motion is to approve the Panama Way consolidation. The next item is the Cotton Way subdivision. This is the subdivision of one parcel into two parcels. The proposed lot one would have frontage on Panama Way. It would be six hundred twenty-two square feet in area. The proposed lot two would have frontage on Forty-Fifth Street and would be eight hundred forty-nine square feet in area. Two houses are located on the subject property, and the recommended motion is to approve the Panama Way subdivision. The next item is the Halleck Street consolidation. It's the consolidation of two lots into one lot. The proposed lot would have frontage on Halleck Street and be seven thousand two hundred six square feet in area. One house is located on the subject property, and the recommended motion is to approve the Halleck Street consolidation. The next item is the Penn Avenue consolidation. This is the consolidation of three parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have frontage on Penn Avenue and would be twelve thousand five hundred fifty-five square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant, and the recommended motion is to approve the Penn Avenue consolidation. The next item is the Thirty-Fourth Street consolidation. This is the consolidation of two parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have frontage on Thirty-Fourth Street and would be nineteen thousand four hundred thirty-four square feet in area. An industrial building is located on the lot, and the recommended motion is to approve the Thirty-Fourth Street consolidation. And the last item is the West Jefferson Street consolidation. This is the consolidation of eight parcels into seven parcels. The proposed lots one, two, and three would have frontage on West Jefferson Street. It would be three thousand seven hundred eighty square feet in area. The proposed lot four would have frontage on West Jefferson Street would be two thousand four, or would be three thousand two hundred forty square feet in area. The proposed lot five would have frontage on West Jefferson Street and would be three thousand four hundred and twenty square feet in area. The proposed lot six would have frontage on West Jefferson Street would be six thousand nine hundred eighty square feet in area. The proposed road area lot would have frontage on West Jefferson Street and would be three thousand four hundred and seventy-four square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant, and the recommended motion is to approve the West Jefferson Street consolidation. And that's it. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Mr. Shepke. We now open up the floor to public comment. Please raise your hand if you would like to speak. And I'm assuming.
I do not see any hands raised.
Thank you, and we will open up to the floor, to the commissioners. And hearing none, do we have a motion to approve plan of lots, I'm one through six, as presented by Mr. Shepke?
So moved.
So moved, Commissioner Dietrich, second.
Second, Commissioner Burton Falk.
Commissioner Burton Falk, and I will go through a roll call. Commissioner Mondor, Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo. Commissioner Askey. Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Dietrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill, aye, so moved. The plan of lots are approved as stated in the agenda. And last item, director's report. Do we have a director's report today?
I'm sorry to, to not be able to let you off the hook quite so soon. I have a quarterly report for you.
Okay.
Let me pull that up.
We'll let it happen this time and only three more times this year.
Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, we are.
All right, this is quarter three for twenty twenty-two, so only one more time this year. And the cases that we've seen. July twenty, sorry, July twelfth, we had, sorry. Two thirty-nine Fort Pitt Boulevard. If you recall, that was exterior renovations, and it was approved with conditions, and that ZDR is actually already complete. And then, and ZDR meaning zoning and development review application, just in case that wasn't clear. And then we have the Murray Hill District, which you acted on today. And Smithfield Street, which also. Familiar with, so, and I think. I can check with my colleagues, but I'm not sure if there are any significant updates on past cases throughout the quarter, prior quarters.
Hi, yeah, this is Ann Kramer of staff. For, just for your education, commissioners, I did update the, the case status for anything that was still. Under review or open on the previous quarter. So if you have one in particular or something like that. That you might have a question on or wondering what the case status is, that data is, is updated for your. For your, uh, refusal.
Great, and if the commissioners have any questions, of course, feel free to, to let us know, and we will. Do our best to, to provide answers and updates, and you should have gotten a copy of this. If not, it's forthcoming. So that's it. Everybody have a great rest of your. What is this?
Summer.
July. We will see.
Have a great summer, everyone.
You too. Everyone have a great summer.
Oh, no, we have to vote.
You have to adjourn.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved by Commissioner Blackwell, seconded by Commissioner Dietrich. All in favor?
Aye.